No, if Bob is here, I'm kind of listening in my perception of spotting.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Where's Eric?
I think I'm in the edge of Nebraska or the other ends of Colorado.
We had six.
Cool.
Okay, so we'll call a special meeting to order. Let's stand for pledge allegiance, please. Help Chris.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we worship Sam's. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll take roll call. I'll go first, Mayor Ernie Valenzuela.
Michael, go first.
I need angle.
First one.
All right, well, do new business. We state the joint powers agreement of the Goodie Community Fire Truck Association.
Do you have the right file? Everybody have the right file, yeah? Is this what you have? Does she have this one?
It should look like this.
This one that was delivered.
I never got one delivered.
No, I did all of them.
Move that one.
It should have like page numbers at the bottom. No, that's not the right one.
It's um.
Oh, it's towards the back.
Yeah, this is the only one we should be looking at. Put that off.
You have it?
I've got an order, hang on.
We have the last order.
Yeah, that's the one with this on it. Well, I don't know, because I.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I didn't print it with color. Not all of them are printed with color.
No, I printed this on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I have the right one then.
Yeah.
There we go, got it. Right?
Yes, what's this?
I have no idea.
Don't get it out of order. Okay, this is not.
One, two, three, just walk through the page, everybody down.
Everybody should have ten pages. Okay. I know, that's because I'm odd. So this is what we all should be looking at.
Sorry, just, yeah, I'm good.
You guys just went through the column?
So. What?
No, I'm sorry. That's fine.
You and two more.
Yeah, two dot two.
What about it? A two two?
So, so for two dot two, Bob, are you there?
I am.
So I think, and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, I do, I think that governance is, might be mislabeled. So, and I had, I had a hard time wrapping my arms around this as well. So governance is actually the members, you know, about the two elected officials. Those are the members, so there's twenty members. Does that make sense? So you're calling them directors, but they're really members.
It, it doesn't in the sense that the agreement as it's been drafted refers to each member of community. Goodhue, Belchester, the six townships. It refers to each of them as a member.
Right.
So you can't refer to their communities as members and then also refer to the two people that they appoint as the members. And that's just confusing, it's heck. So, there's on the board as directors and you're referring to the communities that are member of communities as members. But this is just a drafting thing, right? It's not a substantive thing, it's a drafting thing. But you shouldn't refer to both the member of communities and the people on the board as members. And that's just really confusing.
Okay, so what would you? So if we call them member communities, right?
So you would call, you'd call community members and then you would call the two people from each community would be directors. So then what would you call people who are on the executive board? Would they still just be directors?
Well, they are directors if they're on the board. Everybody that's on the board would be a director, but if you're on the executive committee, then you can call them executive committee members or you can call them officers. They are officers of the board, that's another way to refer to them. So that's what now, in a business corporation, you've got board and directors.
Right.
And you've got, you know, people that have titles, they're still directors, they just have titles. That means they're corporate officers, the president, the vice president, the secretary, et cetera. So that's what we're trying to mimic here and so that's how I would refer to them.
Michael's writing that down, okay? So just, just to be clear, say that, so you would call.
Well, just like the executive board positions, it lists as chair, vice chair, secretary, treasurer.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and I think that makes sense. I think that's kind of what we were trying to mimic. Okay, no, that's an easy correction I feel like we could bring up to the, to the committee here to talk about. And I think that's really just a clerical error at that.
Okay. So then your next comment was about the secretary and the treasurer, correct?
Yes, I understand that that position would be, I mean, it would be a single person who would serve as the secretary and the treasurer and that's common, that's typical. What isn't difficult would be to have that person be appointed by the board, not appointed by the member of communities, not a person that's appointed by the member of communities. So in other words, every community, as I understand it, is going to have two directors. They appoint two people. So that's sixteen people, two from each of eight communities, that's sixteen. And then the secretary of treasurer could be a seventeenth person, I guess, that the board would appoint. And it wouldn't have to be a member of your communities, it wouldn't have to be a person who's a director on the board. It shouldn't have to be somebody that anybody serving on diversity council or any of the other government entities knows. And that, I've never seen that before. I don't know why you would do that.
So, so the reasoning behind that is if we had a secretary treasurer who were to resign currently and there was no one else within our organization or association, we would have to find someone from without, whether that be a service or a company of sorts or what else. And so that's where we have it. In your comment here, it also says that they unilateral, or they have unilateral control over all money. That is not correct. The secretary treasurer, as stated in a different section, but I do not remember that said section, has, does not have unilateral control. They have, all checks must be signed by them and the chair. And if the chair is not available, the vice chair can also make that signature. But also, you know, any purchase over twenty-five thousand dollars must be approved and/or within the capital improvement program or finance plan. So there are stipulations to how that person, company, business, whatever it may be, spends the money.
Is it possibly in the three dot two?
Yeah, so let me just think, I'm not worried about, county member, Rob, I'm not worried about the second point. I understand you're saying that any checks would have to be signed by two people from the board. I get that. And my concern is that there's language in there that says that the secretary treasurer is the sole person who keeps all the books and records, but I'm not, I'm not actually worried about that very much. What I'm primarily worried about is the idea that, let me, let me take a step back. It's common for cities to have accounts, right, hire an accounting firm to audit your books and records. But it's also common for there to be a secretary treasurer in a lot of cities. And that doesn't preclude that person from hiring a firm to help out, right? I mean, that's the normal thing, is that any board that has a secretary of treasurer might well need to have an accountant that does all the work. That's fine. But you still need a person who is the person who's in charge of communicating with the accountant and is in charge of presenting the records to the board when the board needs. And I, I don't know why that person wouldn't have to be a director on the board. That's always the way it is. Person who is the secretary of treasurer is always one of the directors. And I don't know why you deviate from that, because it seems to me you want the person who is in charge of this to be somebody that one of the member of communities appointed.
And I, and I guess I go back to the issue that we are not faced with now, but we're looking down the road at, is if there is no one within a community in the association that would want to be our secretary treasurer, then we have the option to look outside. Let's say there's someone in a section of Chester Township that's not actually within our association. Let's say someone in Wakuta Township. Let, it, it gives us the ability and that's, and that's where we're looking. And that's what we want to keep avenues open to. No different than if we didn't have anyone at the city here who could look over our budget. We would have to find someone to do it and that's what we're trying to keep open in this instance with this provision in here.
Yeah, nothing would prevent you from doing what you just said. If, if the secretary treasurer needed to be a director on the board, which is always the way it's done, that would prevent you from hiring somebody to help with the books or use somebody from another township or whatever. You could do, I mean, that's fine, that's normally how it's done. So it, it just, I, I don't know why, I don't understand why you would have an officer on the board. A person who is literally has a title on this board who wouldn't be a director appointed by one of the member of communities. That's, I, I just, I don't understand why that would be the case. I mean, would that, so if the secretary treasurer wasn't a director, would they not get a vote then on matters related to the finances? You would think that the secretary treasurer would present the report and then actually get the vote on things too, along with the board. But I, I, again, I mean, ultimately this is up to you guys, I just, I've never seen, I've never seen it done this way.
Look, isn't the secretary and treasurer, aren't they considered a director because they're part of the executive board? Yes. So.
No, no, that's not the way it's written. No, what the agreement says as it's drafted is that the member of communities each appoint two directors. And that's the board. It's not the two directors plus other people. So, and, and I don't know how it can be two directors from each community plus other people who aren't even members of your community. Your communities, I don't.
Governing body of each member is shown in six point one shall name two elected officials of its city council and or town board to serve as directors on the association board of directors. Voting director shall be appointed, appointed for one year term. The governing body, alternate members, the governing body of each member shall name one elected official of its city council or town board to serve as an alternate director. So we go on. Well, then it goes down to two point three, executive board positions. The directors shall elect five executive board officers. Terms of the board shall expire December thirty first of the year at which they are elected. Except for each director shall serve until a successor has been duly selected and qualified. Board members serve at the discretion of the body that appointed them and may serve more than one term. Those positions are chair, vice chair, secretary and treasurer. So that's four, where's the fifth?
Secretary treasurer is one title together. So you have chair, one, vice chair, two. Secretary treasurer is a combined title, so that's three. And then you appoint in section three of two point three, you select two at large.
So those five are completely separate from the two members of each community?
So that's what makes, yes, that's what makes up the executive board. So think of it as you have a chair as being your CEO, you have your vice chair, your, I don't know, VP or whatever you want to say, president and VP, and then you have your secretary treasurer as your, I guess CFO, and then you would have two at large.
And where do those two at large come from? From within the?
From within the organization, they're chosen, chosen.
From within the communities that it serves.
But they're already, they would already be directors. So let's say.
John and Sam.
Yeah.
That are on, they're members.
They're already, they're already attending these meetings, they're not extra people. They're already one of the twenty people that attend these meetings. Because there's ten communities, each community sends two people, there's twenty. And then from that pool of twenty, you have five directors.
It's confusing.
Well, is it right? I don't, I'm sorry, are there ten communities? I thought there were eight.
Um, I thought there were ten.
Yeah, I see.
There was ten.
There's ten.
Okay, yes.
So I apologize, so if that's, if that's correct, now I'm gonna, I'm be aggravating maybe, but I didn't say this in any of my comments. Because even if I didn't get, but I'm surprised I don't have my confidence in front of you as I drive here, but I, I just have to say, having a board with sixteen representatives, directors, if there were eight communities or twenty, if there are ten, I don't know how that's going to operate. I mean, I literally don't know how this is going to operate. That's, that's just such an unbelievably large group for an organization like this. And what's the problem with that is that the way it's spelled out now, every director would have one vote. And so if a community's director doesn't show up and their alternate doesn't show up, then that community is losing a vote on any matter that comes up.
Correct.
So there's going to be an impetus for this to be everybody, but there's no, we all understand, there's no way. I mean, you would never be able to call a meeting ever of all twenty people. I mean, that's just not practical that they can get all twenty people in a row. So I guess I, the logic behind that is, is maybe, and I don't know why we've made that so complicated. I just, it seems like every community could have one director and that director would be expected to show up. And that would greatly simplify everything we're talking about. Otherwise, you know, that, I mean, I realize I'm jumping around on issues, but it is.
So then you would still have one director with one.
Hang on, Bob, you, we, you broke up there.
Skin in the game here. And Bob, you, you, you broke up probably about two sentences ago.
So, if I may, from what I understand, this, this part of the document is very similar to what we have had for the last fifty years. And for the last fifty years, they've been able to call a meeting which is three fifths of the members to show up. Which, for context, three fifths would be.
Sixty percent.
Yeah, sixty percent, or that would be twelve? Yeah, twelve hundred twenty.
Well, that's not what it says, right? It doesn't say three fifths of the communities, it says three fifths of the directors.
Yep. Yep, and we, we have, for the last fifty years.
The board is out?
No, 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 the, the board, the board is not twenty people, the board is five. When we call an annual meeting though, we have to.
The executive committee is, the executive committee is five, or four, depending on how you count it, but.
Five.
And that's not the board. The executive committee isn't the board, that's just, that's the heads of the board.
Correct, and, and we can get twelve hundred twenty people. It happens every year.
You have to get, to have a forum, if there are twenty directors, two from each of the ten communities, then I guess three fifths of that would be what, twelve directors?
Yep.
Okay, and so you're saying that, you're, you're saying that those, that hasn't been a problem, get twelve.
Nope.
Directors in the room to have meetings?
Nope.
I, I just, I have a question. If, if there's been two from each community, we only have one assigned from Goodhue, it's Joe.
No idea, that's why I went.
No, no, I mean, like, the fifty year history, I'm just saying that.
I have no idea.
Two votes.
You would.
Because we wanted a part of the voting thing until, that's what this is all about, is becoming.
No, under the current agreement, there's no non-voting members. There's no idea, the idea that Goodhue hasn't had a vote is wrong, that's not what the agreement says. I, I mean, maybe that's the way it's been done, but that's not the, the agreement, our agreement.
Goodhue has had a vote.
Our agreement does not have this idea that there are any non-voting members.
Correct, Goodhue has had a voting say, yes. Why they have only said one? I couldn't answer that because I'm not that old, I haven't been around that long and I don't know the history. But that's behind us, that's why we're moving forward. But that's behind us, that's why we're moving forward.
Move point now.
Yeah, so, so I I I think. You know, I understand your concerns about this, Bob, um, and I think that's why. I like to think we we are elected to do our due diligence, to show up to things that we are elected and appointed to do, and. That's what we're here to do, um. So I I I think I totally understand your your viewpoints and and worry in that, but um. Maybe we're an anomaly, but we haven't had an issue of it in the last fifty years that I've heard of, um. So, and I can tell you, the only. People that didn't show up to the last meeting was Chester Township. So we had eighteen out of twenty people there. Um, so, we.
Okay, and that's, that's fair, and and again, we're. Chucking around a little bit, but, so, I mean, I I, you know, I think you all understand that I am concerned about. The urgency here and us as the largest. Member of community and the one that's being asked to contribute the most, that this has started being pushed on us, I'm concerned about that perception. But that said, I also remember, Ron Burris, what you just said was. The reason we're doing this, the reason we're doing this amendment or or changing the deal. Is to avoid this problem where Good You is not a voting member. But that's not correct, we are a voting member, maybe we haven't been voting, maybe we haven't been sending to people, but that's just our problem.
Yeah.
Not, we should be.
Correct.
We should be sending to members, but that's, we don't have to change the agreement, the agreement doesn't say. We're not a non-voting member, we are a voting member of the current.
And I agree with that, Bob, I'm. I agree with that, I I'm not disagreeing with that, we are voting member, you are correct. This past year I did vote. And so, yes, I'm I'm not, sorry, that notion of. I and I don't know where it started or why it started, and we talked about the last meeting as Janine can attest, but no, Good You is a voting member and we agree upon that. Now, to the, to the, you know, everything else I get, I guess in that is a moot point, let's move on, yeah, um. So next comments are relevant, we just went through that, um. And, okay, so the next comment, we already went over, it's talking about. You know, how is there only, a full board's eighteen people, doesn't work out, we went through that, um. So, um, next comment.
Well, this is my brother Ron Burris, can I stop you?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you, I just, I I it's hard, you know, I'm I'm sorry that I'm not there, but, um, is the objective here, is the goal of the committee? That the executive committee, the five people, the president, the, you know, whatever the titles are gonna be, is it the idea that those five people? Can convene a meeting and take actions for the whole group, or is that not the goal?
That is not the goal, no, um, the executive board or the five people, their biggest thing is they are there to help. Um, convey issues from the. Fire Relief Association, which is the firefighters, to the other communities that are involved, um, and to help take. Some strain off of the fire chief, um, so they are more merely a pass through, um.
The liaison between.
They are the liaison, yes.
Firefighters.
Between the firefighters and the neighboring, the communities within the association, um. Yeah, so, um, no, they are not gonna, they are not the ones that have the power nor authority to make any. Drastic or rash decisions for the members within. Sorry, member and community.
Yeah, no, that 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 clarification helps.
Okay. Um, so you you next comment, Bob, here, it talks, um, reading it out back to you, giving the member, member communities an equal vote when Good You will, um. Contribute almost twenty-five percent of the money compared to two percent by other towns seems quite unfair, regardless of the members. Each have two directors, does this mean each director gets one vote? If so, if so, say that, um, no. So going to your second line there, um, each gr, sorry, each director does get a vote, um. So, yes, each community then has two votes, um, so there is a total of twenty votes. If a full board is there, um. As to your point on, you know, Good You contributing twenty-five percent of the money compared to two percent by. Actually a township, um. So Good You, we're at. Roughly thirteen hundred people, the township can can. Chipping in two percent, Chester Township. Figures are rough because Wabashaw County does not. Have the data as readily available as Good You County, um, but there's roughly twenty people within that area of Chester Township that contributes. Um, so if we try to. We are trying to push a fair number on everyone, and that's our whole goal of this, is to push a fair number upon everyone, um. So you also look at it and and we look at it in this sense is, you can't charge them nothing. Um, if we did it by population, they would go down, if we did it by. Acreage, any monetary value of homes, everything, they would go down, um, the reason we chose two percent as a minimum. For them to pay is, we figured out, we did the math, they would actually be paying like one point one percent. So of a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
I understand all that, I I I just want my point not to be lost, my point is is very simple, it's that. Um, if every community here is going to have equal voting power, every community is gonna have two senators, if we were comparing this to Congress. Every community's gonna have two senators that all get equal votes. Then the fact of the matter is that Good You will have equal power to make a decision on the budget. Or on new capital purchases or on anything else. You'll have an equal vote, even though you will be paying in well over ten times. More than the townships, than than a couple of the townships. And that's just inherently financially unfair, but now, you know, it's a policy decision, it's not, it's not a legal observation, this is just what I've seen from many joint powers groups. You're gonna be paying in over, almost twenty-five percent of all of the new capital purchases. And you're gonna have no more vote on whether to do that purchase than a township that's paying in less than a tenth. Of what you're paying. And I mean, so it's the 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 representation here, it's not proportional to the amount of investment the communities are making.
Bob, do you have a number in mind that you've been thinking about that you think is fair?
No. No, I mean, there's a lot of different formulas to address what I'm talking about, but the idea of weighted voting, which is what we're talking about here, voting on matters that come before the board. That is proportional to the amount of money the communities put in, is a very common thing in joint powers. But there's different ways to do it, obviously.
It's almost like if if we're doing twenty-five percent and there's twenty members on the board. It's like Good You should, I mean, the way I'm reading it, Good You should be responsible for five of the votes.
Well, I mean, that would be directly proportional to, and you know, there's ways to do it that are less directly proportional, yeah, you get my, you get, obviously you get my thrust here is. If we're, I mean, clearly what's happening is we're being asked to contribute more, to contribute to the operating of the. Organization, which I've said in the past, I think is probably fair, but if that's the case, then it seems to me we ought to have a little bit more power. Since we're the ones paying a big chunk of the money. So I, and how you do that exactly is, you know, something else for negotiation, but that's common. For a community like yours to want a little bit more say in what goes on because you're being asked to pay one.
Bob, at some point, can you get? Get us a formula that you think? Could be, I guess, a starting conversation of of this. Fair amount that you think Good You should. Expect to pay?
Sure, you know, I began, it it it, we we could do it. In a way that's similar to the formula that's proposed here for how we decide how much we pay in. And frankly, we could have the same formula for voting that we have for contributions. That would be, uh, to the council members example, that would just, you know, we'd get, we would get a quarter of the votes if we paid in a quarter of the money. That would be one way to do it, another way, you know, straight based on population, another way would be based on. You know, you you can imagine all the different ways you could do it, so, but yeah, I can, I can give you an example, sure. I I I think the key here, at this point, it seems to me as if the council agrees with the point I'm making, if you think. You should have more votes based on your larger, uh, percentage, but I think you have to talk through that. And then start talking about the fairest way to do it. And I, you know. No, I I don't think anyone has said this to the committee, right, I I don't, I haven't heard that anyone on behalf of Good You has said to the other communities. Hey, if we're gonna be paying twenty-three and a half percent. We should have more than two votes on stuff.
So I'm understanding this, I guess, so are you saying then, on a board of twenty, that then? Good You should have? Four representatives there?
A little mathematically.
Eric, can I tell you one way to do it? I I I'm not saying anything specific, cause I don't know what the best. Way forward is, I don't know what the best, you know, what you guys think, Eric, this is really, this is, this isn't legal land, this is fairness land, so I just. In a lot of groups where the the contributions are. They're very uneven, typically the parties paying the most want to have more representation on the board.
You you you, we all do have to remember at this point too, um, we have, we are gonna be voting on this based upon the. Current. Contract, which means we only have two votes. So you do have to remember how it's gonna look when we come in and wanna vote. As a board, that we wanna have five directors and everyone else get a proportion of a number. How that will look to all the other communities, how do you have? Chester Township have a vote when they say they have two percent, two percent is? A third of a person? So you're gonna have to round that up.
Under the current, under the current agreement, Good You doesn't pay anything toward operating, right?
Uh, to operating, correct.
So, I mean, that, in that environment, it makes sense to have equal voting, I mean, we don't pay anything, so. It's perfectly fair to Good You to have equal voting with the other communities, we don't pay for the operations of the organization, other than. You know, the, we have to train firefighters, we have to pay for that, so, but.
So then why haven't we changed the constitution to allow us to have more than two congressmen? Per state?
Say again?
Now it's gonna get hurt too.
Why, why shouldn't we change the constitution of the United States of America then to have more than two congressmen per state? It's not fair.
Based on population.
Well, uh. That's why the United States is organized, we have representatives too.
Well, that's what we wanna organize too.
Right?
I feel like we're splitting hairs again, I feel like this is a moot point, I understand your. Comments, but.
Yeah, it's, I'll be quiet, I mean, this is a policy thing, it's not legal.
Well, Bob, I mean, we appreciate the fact that you 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 give, you spread awareness for our policies, that's what we need, is, you know, we want to come. To an agreement here, and. I guess I'd like to hear from the other council members on this topic, what do you think about, I mean. Of this, of, you know, us requiring to pay more. With less votes, what, what do you, what are your guys' thoughts?
I get what, I get what he's saying. But I see the other side, cause I'm, I was down there with Michael a couple of times as well. And these guys have been doing it this way forever. I don't.
I mean, there's always a, there's always an argument to that statement though, you know, that doing it that way forever doesn't mean, you know. Chris, what do you think?
I mean, I, I understand. The point of, you know, having. Equal votes. I also understand, you know, like I just, I I I did this. Quickly here, okay, you've got like Zbroda, Chester and Belchester that are. Three percent or lower. Right, so what I kinda did here was anybody that was less than ten percent. They got one vote. They got one vote, because. It's just, it's simple that way, Good You, being that we're twenty-two point six five, we got five votes. Hacri got four votes because they're, you know, they're higher up there, so. Featherstone got three and Good You Township got. Two, that came out to your twenty members.
How many do Bell Creek have?
One, because they were eight point nine one, they were under ten percent, so, I mean, that's kind of just very simple for me. I mean, it could be done a little bit differently with like a calculator or whatever, but, um. Just quick math, I mean, I just did it, twenty people, ten percent, that's two people. You know, twenty percent is at least four. Um, but. You can give and take a little bit, and I understand that. You know, I don't wanna spend. Money if I don't have to, but it shouldn't be left up to. Chester to make the decision for us. When they've got, how many people that live there, twenty?
Something in that range, yeah.
So, I mean, I get it on both sides of it. I just. I don't, I, it it's hard for me to. Spend money. That we don't have. On something, and I mean. That's twenty. Twenty-two, twenty-three percent. That we have to spend regardless of what our vote is, because we could vote no for it, and everybody else is gonna vote, and we still have to pay it.
Correct.
And that's where, to me.
But even if we had five votes, fifteen people could still vote four and vote us against, and we're still outnumbered anyway.
And that's where, to me, you. You're elected to do your due diligence for your community. And you have to be active in doing your homework outside of this room. So if you and your community feel passionate about not getting the fire truck. Not getting a new ambulance, not getting new radios, new turnout gear, then you have to convince other townships of your reasoning. And that's where we're elected to do this for our communities.
Right.
We're, we're, we can't come to this room and do our work here and think it's all good outside of here, we have to continually do. What we need to do and help other townships understand what we're going through. Because, yes, you're right, for Chester, it's easy because they have such a low percentage, but. Other people understand that we are bearing a large brunt of it. Because of our population and our building values, and so. You know, when things come up like this, at the same notion, that means we as a community have to do better with budgeting. And again, it's in the past, and 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 I'm looking forward that every community going forward. Has to be better at budgeting and saving for the rainy day funds, because. As we heard, a couple of years ago, we bought a pumper truck for six hundred thousand. You know, now it's nothing to spend one point three, one point four million for that same truck. And that's five years later. Seven, sorry, maybe seven. Yep, so that's what sparked this whole thing, is we get to use a brand new truck. And it 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 rubs them wrong that Good You didn't pay. And so I I'm not trying to bring that up saying that, you know, there's anything. We should go back about, obviously, but, you know. I'm just, yeah.
That I I understand, you know, and it's, at the end of the day though, we, you know, we do represent our community. and we have accountability to have this discussion as long as it takes to get it right. That's the thing, we, we cannot be left feeling that we have to rush through this and make a decision based on what other townships are telling us that they want us to do. So. We got smart minds here, we just, we gotta come up with the right formula. And this is a, this is a tough one, deciding a good balancer, I, I.
I mean, I don't doubt that everything that the board wants to do, or the members, or whatever people wanna label them as, I don't doubt that everything that they do, they want for the better of all of the communities. And, you know, they want a new truck, well, obviously, like Michael said, they're all gonna communicate that this is what we need. We need to move forward with this now before the price jumps up. I don't think that they're going to just willy-nilly say, hey, we're gonna go do this and to heck with what this other community thinks. Like, that's where I'm stuck, is because the association has been so great for the past fifty years that I don't think that they're going to.
No, and I obviously, I obviously wasn't on any of this in twenty. Do you remember what year they bought the truck?
Twenty-two, wasn't it?
During COVID, I remember that, like, yeah, maybe it was twenty-two.
I know they talked about it during.
Yeah, um, I know, they had talked about buying it from what I kind of gathered for the, for eight to ten years before that. So there was no, let's buy this thing tomorrow, boom, let's go, okay. Um, there was a lot of lead-up to it, and anticipation to it. For, for kind of, they, they wanna upgrade radios, and we're talking about forty, fifty thousand dollars. And, um, you know, that, from what I've been told, has been brought up for the last couple of years, and we still haven't purchased that, and that's fifty thousand dollars.
And what was that?
Radios.
Oh.
Um, we wanna get a couple encrypted radios so we can actually talk to the police? Because right now, we have to go through dispatch, and everything's relayed, and it's terrible. So, you know, there, there is no fast and immediate rash decision-making happening. For God's sakes, these are old farmers. For them to spend more than like fifty bucks, I feel like it's an act of Congress to happen, so, um. It, it just, yeah. They, um, there's no rash decision-making, I can guarantee you from any of these guys.
So can I ask you a question?
Yes, I think.
And I, I appreciate Councilmember Rock Horse, what you just said. And I, I understand what you said, and I, I think I essentially agree with it. Is the way we got here, um, the way we got here is not something that I understand. I, I understand all the work that's gone into in this board, and I guess my only question is, look, I've, I've heard about the committee, this committee that has worked on a proposed new agreement. What, what was Good You's role in working on the committee on getting this agreement to where it is today?
So, um, I can answer that. So let's track back about three, four years, well, more than that, sorry. Let's track back about seven years, um, is when two, the chair and vice-chair of the association actually came to a city council meeting, were on the agenda, and had stated that, they wanted Good You, they asked Good You to entertain an idea to rewrite this document at that time and basically try to do what we're doing now, which is get them as a percentage-based member. And Good You said no. And so a couple years later, with a new council, they tried again, same answer, and then I was told somewhere in the COVID times, they also were on the agenda and, and, and told the same thing. So they, they had tried three different times, three different councils, and, um, were all told the same answer. Well, then, yes, you buy that fire truck, and six hundred thousand is divided out between the nine communities that are percentage-based members, and it really doesn't sit well. I mean, no different than, uh, you know, use a, a free boat because someone else paid for it type idea.
So, Councilmember, I, I understand all of that.
Yep, yep, I'm getting there, sorry.
And I said, I, I, I said a couple of times, I think that the request by all the other members to have Good You have more skin in the game is totally acceptable. I, I, that doesn't surprise me a bit, uh, I get it. I'm just asking a very clear question. The deal is being presented here, you know, the, the formula based on population half and based on building value half, and then just the agreement generally, what has Good You's role been in getting through?
Yes, yes, yeah, so, so the, the five people that were chosen, um, it was agreed upon that they would not be board, wait, no. I take that back, we did not talk about them needing to be or not needing to be board members. Um, but it was just basically five individuals from the association, um, that wanted to be on this. Um, so it was myself, um, actually, I, at the meeting, uh, in February, I asked Joe, I said, do you wanna do this, or do you want me to? He goes, you can take it, I said, okay. So it was myself, Richmond Juris, um, it was Steve McAmara, Roger Bolstead, and George Ratch. Who decided that, so yes, I've been at every meeting, I've voiced opinions, concerns at every meeting. And, you know, the, the reason, um, how we came up with the formula that we did is, yes, there's a lot of formulas out there that we could have chosen, and a lot of them, and I would say most of them are much easier to mathematically figure out and even easier to write out on paper. Um, the reason we chose this one is, we thought this one was the, the best fit for us. The other four members felt that Good You needed to pay a fair share of it, and I won't lie, I agree. I, I think, as a person who's gonna have to ultimately pay it with tax money, yes, I agree. Um, that Good You should have a fair portion of it, I don't, and, and, you know. So, yes, I was at every meeting, I was giving opinions and, and voicing concerns as needed.
So.
No, I, I appreciate that, because I, I'm not, I want to clarify, you know, I, obviously, I've got criticism concerns about the draft, you know, the agreement, I, I don't really, I'm not, it's not my place, but even if it was my place. And I don't, I'm not suggesting that the formula, partly based on population, partly based on, uh, property values, I don't think that's inherently unfair, I'm not, I'm not critical of that formula. Uh, that might make perfect sense, uh, I guess in some few, not me, but I'm not critical of that. I just, I think that if all of the other things in the agreement are gonna, are gonna get changed too, then we need to be careful about making sure that this new formula, that, that we're well represented and how this new formula is gonna work for GAT.
I understand. I do understand.
Is this the same formula that was used for the old agreement?
No, the old agreement was much more complicated, obviously. I guess I just wanna make sure, does anyone else have any more questions about, I guess, what we've been going over with? The amount of directors who would have it, had and such?
No.
Chris, Janine? Okay. So I guess, comment seven and eight by Bob is very similar to itself and to what we've kind of been talking about of, he's just talking about the obligation of a, of a quarter of it, um, of the debt issued, and that, you know, it states that the, we, we have the powers to issue debt as needed. Again, it, it's one of those things that, yes, in a meeting, it will be brought up that we're thinking about buying a truck. You would then, the, the directors would then bring it back to the council to, to let them know about the decision-making and to then, you know, kind of inform everyone, obviously, as we go through it. Comment nine from, from Bob states, hmm? Comment nine states that, uh, having the firefighters pick their bosses bad policy increases potential liability. Um, they can make a recommendation, but, but this needs to be a board decision. Um, and, and this is where i- it's kind of one of, another hill that, I hate to say it, but the committee's gonna kind of die on. And the reason is, is, um, the association, think of it this way. If you're gonna go into a burning building, do you wanna have some person that we don't know picked to be the fire chief, or would you want a person that you can all rally behind, trust with your life to go into a burning building? And that's where the volunteer fire personnel make the decision of who their chief is. Um, the reasoning that we wanna put in the provision, because this is not currently in our contract now, that we wanna put in that the board has at any time the ability to remove the chief, is because we're looking at, into the future, and we're worried, let's say, let's say there's a chief, and for some reason, something changes with that person, um, and the firefighters can no longer trust him, or he's going through a hard time, something changes. Uh, we want the provision to be able to say, okay, we've seen that something's changed, and the fire personnel don't have to make the decision, it can be a board decision so that that person doesn't out then his own comrades, I guess, to say.
So like code of conduct violation?
Correct, exactly.
Right away and handle it?
Yep.
So, yeah, I mean, yeah, Mike, Mike, and Janine, you guys are correct, I mean, it's just, it's kinda, it's kinda nerf, I mean, to me, the way it was explained was, you know, the, the volunteer firemen and women appoint this person, so the association has no idea what their chief's qualifications are?
They should.
I mean, you understand on the site.
So, so, so how do I say this? Can you give, for example, when Derek, right now, Derek Martin went to chief? You know, when he took it, there was, there was some back thought that, yeah, he was, he was gonna be nominated by other, that's typically how it works, is you're kind of nominated to run. And there were some thoughts that, you know, he was the guy with the experience, he was the guy who has been on the department, he knows the department, he knows ins and outs, he knows vehicles, he knows the other personnel, everything. It's normally not, oh, I'm on the department my third year and I'm chief, you know what I mean? So, so it's someone that everyone can trust. Now, um, as the association, this is where the liaisons or the executive board play their role, is, let's say Derek says, hey, I'm not gonna be chief this next year, I have a good feeling that this person's gonna step up, or we're hoping this person can step up because we see them to be the right fit. Uh, uh, again, this is where our duties as, you know, um, politicians, if you will say, come in, and, and, and we have to do our due diligence to attend these different meetings to be brought up to speed. So I, I won't say that we're blindsided. And per se, for this, for this last vote, um, between Derek and another firefighter, the other firefighter volunteered himself, and he did have a few votes, but Derek did win. And, and, and so. Yes, in theory, yes, someone could be blind in, in being chief, it has not happened that way.
The problem with this is, is the following. My fire departments get sued sometimes, right? Fires go bad, uh, people can lose their lives, obviously, fires, property damages, common, uh, and lawsuits happen uh, as a result of the way the fire department performed. And when that happens, who made the decisions? And how the decisions were made is the focus of that litigation. And the very first thing that gets focused on is how did that guy get hit, or down, get hit? Right, I mean, that's the core issue, is was this person qualified to make the call to go into the fully engulfed house? And if the answer is, well, the board doesn't know, the firefighters picked this person, that's not gonna be an acceptable answer in litigation. And for that reason, you know, the county sheriff's department, the, the sheriff's deputies don't pick the sheriff. Uh, in your police department, when you had it, I, I don't think, I believe the council selected the chief. And that's the way all, I think, city public safety departments work. And I, I sort of think it's, the reason is obvious, I mean, you, you avoid the problem of favoritism and picking the popular person as opposed to the most qualified person, and all of those things, which I'm not suggesting has ever happened here, but it can happen, it has happened in other public safety departments. That, that happens, where the firefighters or the police officers are in the military. Imagine in the military, if the general was picked by the, by the privates. You know, it, it, it's a problem. So, I mean, that, that's, that's the reason for my comments about that.
And I, I, I guess I could understand if like the firefighters recommended or, um, nominated, and then the ultimate decision came from the board, I can understand that, but, you know. I also understand I wouldn't wanna go into a burning building with somebody that I don't know, right? But that's where it comes in with, well, us thirty firefighters are gonna nominate.
Joe to do.
Yeah.
The fire chief.
There's no one currently over here, and the board is going to pick one, but they're gonna be looking at everything. They're gonna be looking at qualifications, they're gonna be looking at everything to make that decision.
What if you added a line that said, "Subject to approval of the board"? Would that take the liability out of it? That they could pick them?
That would be a hundred percent fine from my perspective.
Like, they can pick them, but then.
The board just has to say.
The board just has to say, yeah, it's okay.
Could be a rubber stamp.
Yeah, the board, I mean, ultimately, ultimately, the chief should be approved by the board. The board should be approving that person, not just saying, hey, this is the new chief.
So if one line is added there, "The association chief shall be chosen here," and, or whatever, "Subject to approval of the board." Would that be okay, Bob?
Hundred percent.
So they can choose them, but they have to be approved by the board?
Oh.
Did you get that?
So, I, I just have one question about this one, because I, I totally get where you're coming from, um, totally makes sense. In, and I know you're not a, how do I say it? You wouldn't be a lawyer that would handle a litigation lawsuit. Maybe you would, I don't know, I'll stop talking, maybe you are, I have no idea. But my question would be is, let's say there was a fire in Good You, someone did sue the fire department, they looked at this and went, oh, you know, the fire chief was selected by the volunteer fire personnel. Would they go after the personnel, would they go after the relief association? Like, who would ultimately the money come from at that point? Because that's what they search for, we all know with money.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, well, I mean, obviously, litigation can involve lots of different parties, I, you know, we're speculating, but for sure, it would be naming the association, right? The, the, the joint power of the group, and whatever money it has, that would be the first target. Uh, and this association in question should be insured by the League of Associations, I presume it is?
Yes.
Uh, and so that would be the, you know, that would be the primary target. And no, I don't, I don't think that individual firefighters that might have voted for a chief who made a bad call in a fire situation, I can't imagine that individual firefighters could be liable. I'm not suggesting that at all, I'm just suggesting that the liability to the group, the association is, is high, the potential liability is higher unless the board has vetted the candidate, has signed off on the candidate brought forward by the firefighters.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Okay, thank you, Ben, this is my question.
And the first we've done, the next up comes.
Yeah. I think that was more part of the other one, I mean, did anyone else say comments about question ten? Sorry, comment ten? So I, I guess your comment thirteen, Bob, reads as this, as I commented previously, using firefighter, used firefighter, firefighting equipment depreciates fast, so requiring liquidation of all assets means there are very little money to distribute at the end. I guess what is your other proposal?
Yeah, I, I know on that one, I just know that there are, there are, there are joint powers organizations where the idea is that, you know, they're making a quick.
You're breaking up.
A quick question, Matt, or, or?
Bob, unfortunately, that whole last statement was flickering in and out.
Out, out of my ear, so I'm kind of familiar.
Now we can hear you.
Are you, okay. And I'm saying that I don't have a feeling proposed property, that I'm just seeing in joint powers groups that are, no, they're part of joint powers, table finishing joint powers, any kind of joint powers group. But, option, the.
Yeah, we need to go back, cause we skipped over six, which is.
There is no, the reception's not so good, Bob.
Skipped over what?
Section six. So it would be comment, comment ten?
Yeah, cause I said my portion, how I thought it should be.
I know, but that does, I know, but that's not, that's on the votes, though. Not on the.
So I guess, yeah, we're talking about the page that you have.
Yeah. I was just wondering what she was gonna say, well, it's on the vote, but not on the contribution part, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we talked, I mean, we talked about this relation to the votes, but we didn't talk about this as rewritten up and explained, that the contributions are fifty-fifty taxable value. I'm trying to fix this using the language, provide, provided, although I don't understand why my clear language was rejected, so.
Are you back with us, Bob?
Shoot, I'm gonna take that as a no.
So I don't, that's the biggest piece of this.
Yeah, that's what I'm going.
Well, eleven and twelve are the same thing, right? Thirteen, I think that's depreciation. Fifteen goes back to the votes, right?
I'm just gonna step out because there's a call for Joe. So, is that, is that okay, I'm gonna step out and see what he wants.
So if, so on this number thirteen, so if they're talking about, oh, we've got.
Sorry, comment thirteen?
Yeah, that's where we're at, right?
Well.
I guess I wasn't sure, but we can go to comment thirteen, that's fine by me.
Six, we haven't really finished it, but.
Well, six was, we only talked about it in terms of
The percentage.
Of, of, of the votes.
Right.
Right, but he has concerns about the whole formula, right, so. But eleven and twelve go back to the same thing with the votes, right, so that's the same topic. Thirteen is what we were talking about. Fourteen goes back to the votes, right?
What we're talking about.
What we're talking about, and then that's it, so really.
So really, I feel like the biggest issue that we have is six.
Is six and then getting those guys to agree about the votes.
I mean, I would like to see that difference in the changing of the votes, but.
I mean, they're gonna.
It's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
That's the issue, you know? And that's where, that's where me going to these meetings, you know, I had to, you have to pick your battles. And unfortunately, when, when you're the person that has the single vote versus four, that's what happens. So I, you know, reading over this on section six of funding, Bob has comment ten there, yep, the page with the table. I'll admit, it was a little interesting to read. I think if you read it, including Bob's wording, I do think it is easier to read.
Well, this goes back to the two table argument that we were having.
No, he isn't talking about that.
I know, but he's wondering why we didn't use his original thing.
Why we didn't use his original language, but he also says, also, the table provided is now more appropriate.
Right, 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 but I just don't want, because we only do get one vote, so.
Wait, what?
No, I mean.
We're currently, right now.
Right.
Right?
Well, we don't utilize the other one.
I mean, we did at this last meeting, yeah, yeah. I mean, in, in, in theory, if we have to vote on this tomorrow, we would definitely have to have an alternate.
Yep.
But, yes. So, so I, I think this is my opinion and my thought is, I think we look at six and we, we give them, and when I say we, or I, when I say them, I mean the committee that I've been working with. If we give them six in both views, option one would be how it's currently written and redacting the blue font here. And then if we give them the one with the blue font, but the blue font would be just black, I think this does clear things up. You know, as stated in Bob's comment, it doesn't talk about fifty-fifty taxable value population, whereas Bob did add that, that is a large grammar error.
With her, Bob?
Yeah, I'm back, I haven't heard anything for the last four or five minutes.
We're back to six.
So we were talking about section six, which is funding, six point one is member contributions, you had a comment there. I'll read it verbatim, but it basically says that nothing explained the contribution calculations of a fifty-fifty split of taxable value population. You were unsure why your clear language was rejected, you also stated that the table that is now provided is more appropriate for showing contributions. So you did say that. Going back to, I guess, your first paragraph where it says, you know, not understanding why the clear language wasn't chosen, I guess I don't really know why. But I do agree that what you have added in here and then also removed is a much cleaner, clearer version, because we obviously had two gashing errors in here, which is, we forgot to talk about the one half of the operating budget is to the estimated market value, one half of the operating budget is to total population. So those were obviously gaping holes in this whole thing.
Oh, we didn't present it, they just didn't.
I was talking to no one, dang it. I thought I did good.
I mean, we did present his language, but this is what it came up with, we just forgot the one half, one half.
Try again.
Where did you last hear me?
I'm here, starting to read from section six, and I lost.
So the whole way through, basically, we're gonna do an even shorter version. You were just talking about how we missed some gaping errors in here, one being talking about the one half of our budget comes from property value, half of it comes from population, and then you also stated in there that the provider, provided table was much more appropriate. So I, I, I guess I do, I do agree with what you have written and how you have worded it, did you hear me?
I did.
Okay, perfect, perfect, okay. Did, did, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, what?
Did you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, I mean, no, I do agree with the way I reworded it, I think that's, that sounds good.
Do you have anything to add?
No.
Any questions? Okay. I will say, I think this is gonna be, and I don't truly understand why, because I do think this is cleaning up language, but I, I think this will be a hard sell for the committee, no, yes, committee. But I'm gonna try to do my best.
The hard sell is because they've been doing it a certain way for so long and it's, change is difficult right now.
That is certainly part of it, you know, I, I guess when I read it that night, Monday night when we did this, everything sounded good. And then it's one of those things where you take a break and relax and then come back and look at it and you go, what the heck did I just write? And I'm hoping that's what they think, the same thing, that's why I wanna give them the two options. It's hopefully they'll say, this one's a lot more clear, and I'll go like, wow.
Especially this member thing here, all of this.
What section is that?
Yeah, the first one.
Oh, yes.
It made so much sense, and then, you know what I mean, now.
Yep, yep, so I'm hoping a lot of these error edits that we can make will make this easier.
Presentation is key.
Well, that's. So when, when are they, what's, are they meeting on the thirteenth?
The eleventh.
Eleven, and that's a full board meeting.
Yeah.
Hello again.
That's next Monday.
Hi, yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't know, I'm, I'm second one, really.
Based on this, on the, at the very beginning, it does state that this is made and entered as the first day of January.
Of twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six.
Mm-hmm, that's when this would start.
Right, so the, the urgency doesn't seem to have, be so urgent, there's still some time to.
Not necessarily, because we need to have a full board meeting to, to enact this, and we need this enacted in time for the city of Goodyear and the city of Belchester to get this into their budgets, as well as, it's a farming community. Good luck trying to pull someone out of a tractor or green cart in the fall, plus then you start mixing in kids' sports again in school starting up. That's why we're trying to do this all now.
So what's gonna happen between now and Monday, or between now and the meeting?
That's where I'm gonna have to go around to everyone's house, and we're just gonna have to have a joint phone call or something, I don't know. I'm gonna have to figure that out. But I think I think what we need to do as a council, sorry, I shouldn't say need, I think what we can do is we could make some of these clerical errors and fix them, sorry, not make them, we could look at these clerical or gramm- gramm- grammatical errors, edit those, and approve, if we wanted to, we could approve a version of this. Then, if we can have a committee meeting and get the committee on board with it, that document could go in front of a full board come Monday. Which is, I think, what we have to do.
So you're talking about another special meeting?
No, we would work this out right now.
Like, say, we're, we would approve or not approve of what we currently have with the additional writing that Michael put in there.
Or we could really have Janine go to her car, get the computer that she has this on, edit it, print.
Let's do that.
Print it out, look at it, agree upon it, and then.
You'll, you'll drive though, because.
Drive it? Okay.
What if they don't like what you're doing, though?
What's that?
What if they don't like what, what you're gonna do now?
Or re-edit it, you mean?
Yeah.
That's the chance we take, that's the chance we take, that's why beforehand, I'm gonna have to try to get a meeting figured out. I got two days to get a meeting of the committee.
Yeah, Eric, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So what, what is the chance we take?
That we re-edit some of the wording that's in here right now, right now, and then take the re-edited version again and present it to the committee.
Yes, and, and I guess somebody was speculating, well, what if the committee doesn't like it? What if, what if the changes we talked about here aren't acceptable? I, I thought the answer was that's the chance we take, I'm asking, what, what is the view on what that would be? What, what do we think the consequence is if the committee says, no, we don't like the change, you mean, this is not acceptable? Or what's the consequence typically that?
Back to the drawing board.
Back to the drawing board.
Well, not totally, I mean, I guess according to what Rich said was that he threw down the original.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Contract, and that's what they were gonna go with, plus they were gonna throw, what was the number, forty-one?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Because our portion, we still have to pay training, we still have to pay workers' comp, we still have to pay Derek's wages. So we would be doubled if there wasn't approved on Monday.
And that's not in a position where we wanna be at.
So I think we have nothing to lose to try to edit this document. And I'll try to get these guys together to look at an edited version. We're not change, we're not changing things earth-shatteringly, you know, there, there's minor changes that are being happened. I don't need a mouse.
So then ultimately, if it is changed, it wouldn't matter, you would have no choice. I mean, that's the risk, is that, is that, is that not?
Oh, if, if they don't change it, or I mean, if they don't accept it.
Yeah, if they change it and pass it, that's ultimately the risk.
I also don't know the validity to them to actually, and this is where lawyer Bob comes in, I don't know if they can actually force us to pay all that. I don't, that's where, that's where we have a lawyer to look at it all, but at the same time, I can tell you, if we go to Monday's meeting and we don't have this paper, I'm not showing up.
Yeah.
Cause they're gonna bring pitch. Cause they're gonna bring pitchforks.
I, I, I would agree with you.
That's unfortunate, that, that's how they wanna do business, but, you know.
Believe me, I was there, believe me.
So then maybe protect this.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're.
So it would be forty thousand plus ten thousand plus seven thousand plus.
And again, I don't know the validity to that, I don't know if they can contractually do that.
That's what we were told.
I agree, and that's what they think, but I also don't know contractually if that's.
Bob, do you understand what we're talking about, this, the last statement that was brought up to us by, uh, one of the members on the Fire Association made a statement that if we couldn't come to some type of agreement, um, that they were gonna just go back to the original documentation, and then we are still paying the fire chief, we're still paying training, still paying workers' comp, and then on top of that, an additional forty thousand dollars.
And our other percentage, thirty one hundred.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Bob, Bob, uh, it sounds like you're either underwater or in a tunnel.
I started to, 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 to.
That last sentence.
Can we like pull up on his speakerphone of his car with our phone?
Well, he's driving, so he's going in and out of the cinema.
Started to, to.
Well, what I'm thinking is a telephone call is given from video of the data.
Just don't move the cross.
So that's what he was talking about, changing all that.
I can put him on my speaker.
So how do I accept this?
Oh, I'm just wondering.
You all try speakerphone, Bob, cause we, we're not hearing you very well at all.
I think he said, I'm gonna call you.
That's what he said, yeah, okay.
You got the gift.
The what?
The gift.
Maybe I'm computer littering.
Hello? Oh, absolutely, I'm gonna put you on speaker.
So, uh, Mayor, Council, what I was trying to say was, and sorry about my reception here, uh, is that I understand that if we don't work out a new agreement, we'll be stuck with the current agreement. Uh, so I totally understand that, I, I don't understand though how the various amounts that we already presented of having to pay have been calculated under the current agreement, and, and I just don't know that, I just haven't seen it, and so I'm not saying that it hasn't been done, or it hasn't been done right. Maybe it hasn't been done right, but I, I don't know how the amounts that were just referred to correspond to the current agreement.
So.
Uh, so.
So they're under, they as the committee, um, that I'm a part of, is under the assumption and understanding of the current agreement that we're operating off of, that they will continue the current agreement, which means we paid training and, and all that stuff, um, you know, work comp, stuff like that, but then they will also add what our percentage, um, would be, which is that, uh, I, I forget the direct number, um.
Twenty three point five?
Yeah, the, the, no, yeah, the twenty two point.
Twenty two point six five.
Twenty two point six five percent of the levy, um, would also be tacked on, um, and they say that that is just requires a three fifths vote of the full board.
Right, and I, I responded to that point, and, and due to prior meetings, that's not correct. If, if our agreement doesn't say that, uh, and we would not be obligated to.
And I guess that's good news.
So that is what they are, are telling us, um, I guess is, they're saying the opposite, um, and that's where I couldn't speak to the validity of that, because I'm not a lawyer and I don't understand contracts that well, um.
And they did say that I was standing right there when they said that, so.
Yes.
Well, let, let, let's be clear, Mayor Council, if, if, if what they're saying is correct, then what they're saying is they can do what this proposed agreement says without our consent.
Correct.
They don't need our agreement, just change the agreement, have us another twenty two and a half percent, and if that's the case, why, I mean, it, yeah, I don't, I guess I don't, I, I'm not sure that, I, I'm not allowed to say this is a tactic, I mean, that, that isn't, that can't be correct. It can't be correct that other communities, other townships and cities can just change a contract that you intend to and be tasked to consent to changes to a contract, we don't. So, it, I don't, I, I, you know, so, but maybe the consequence of what they're saying, then would be, we're, we're gonna change the agreement, say, maybe create a hundred percent. And we've all decided that's the case, and you're, we're gonna pay a hundred percent, and again, that can't be correct, right? If you all understand that you're correct, but that's the logical conclusion, right, it's why twenty two percent, why not fifty percent, why not sixty percent, why not a hundred percent? Uh, so, I, I think, I guess what I, I guess what we want, I, I don't think we, as a city, in the city council, can accept that, you can't possibly accept the view that the other members to this organization can just tell us what we have to pay.
Yeah, I think that's what Michael was understanding, and I think we all understand the tactic that is trying to be used, we just wanna make sure from a legal standpoint, if there is any validation to those type of statements towards us.
I don't know if it's true or not, to be honest with you.
Well, he's letting us know what, where we stand, so I'm comfortable with that of, let's get, do what you're doing, and let's, you know, if they don't like what they're seeing, and they wanna throw that, you know, then we're, you know, I think we're making an effort, I think we're making. So, so Bob doesn't have to wait though, how mu- I mean, so.
I think we're good, right?
Yeah.
So just accept your own change.
Okay, I will do that.
Does anybody need anything else from Bob?
I don't need nothing from Bob, I, I.
I'll take some frings and a rumza, please.
Yeah.
Some what?
Frings and rumza, it's a Nebraska thing, he just went through Nebraska.
I want a Nebraska, you know, I think.
When you come back, I'll take some frings and a rumza, please.
Well, Bob, I think we're gonna let you go and finish up here, and, and I, you know, we'll get this re- re-edited, and Mike will distribute it, and I guess we'll keep you informed.
Very good, have a good night, Mayor Council.
Thanks.
Thank you, you too.
Travel safe.
Who just came in here?
Uh, councilman, Pete, Pete councilman, he dropped something off in the slot, he did not come in, actually. Okay, okay, so, um, how do I get rid of these little blue ones, here you said?
Okay, so you can, okay, so.
That one, that one.
So you're waiting to do what you've got, and you go, accept your own. Accept insertion.
Okay.
Accept, accept the way you said. Accept insertion, so you have to go.
Okay, I can handle that one.
It's like you have to accept your own.
My own edits?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I, they don't.
Or you can do them all, oh, no, cause then it'll take all of them, so you don't wanna do that, cause we're leaving some.
Do you guys have a, uh, an ending for the very last sentence that maybe is intended? In what, in this pharaoh, it just, it just ends, it's not a sentence. On page ten, although the signature line.
Oh.
It just ends.
I don't know what the intent of that sentence is. I think it should, I think it means on day, year, and month, on this day. This day.
Cause the original.
It's never, it, nobody picked it up, um, I'll, I'll, let me think about this.
Yeah.
Just get rid of the rest of it, and what this, and what you're saying, just get.
Was that the part that was so critical, was it?
No. I know how this is, I just, I just said underside. So if you just add a date line.
And the, the other clerical one, it just feel like the word was being dealt, but the sentence wasn't fixed on section seven two.
We'll, we'll, we'll get there, I, I know which one you're talking about.
Okay, so the other one that we talked about was five point two with the fire chief?
Yeah, you wanna put, um, you want the dot zero, you wanna put.
Um.
He said shall be chosen, and then after the period, put, um, um, well, chosen based on, the Association of Fires shall, shall be chosen by volunteer fire personnel based on training experience.
With final approval of the board.
Subject approval of the board. Yeah, okay. And then the rest of this is.
So you're gonna have Michael send this to you then, too, so it can get.
If you get printed.
Yeah, we can just print it right now, if you want, if you want, I guess.
Go to thirteen dot.
We can all.
I'm just looking for stuff.
Oh, wait, um, six, section six funding.
Yeah, okay.
We're just gonna accept what Bob put in, I think what he put in is the easiest.
Yeah, just go, just go accept. Accept.
Hang on, I think I don't hear you in here though.
Contributions to one half of the total operating.
I guess there's somewhere this thing will read it to me, wow, I didn't know people could be that lazy. Okay, then.
Okay, read everything until you get to, cause this is all the same issue, right?
Thirteen, what do you say?
Um. Yeah, but leave that, because that, that's all about the.
So remove this, kind of.
No, no, just leave it go.
Accept this and section?
Um.
So we said?
On Bob's?
No, seven dot two, I'm, I'm only on seven dot two, is this all the same issue?
Yeah, I removed all that.
Okay, okay.
I rejected that.
I'm not this fire, hang on, I mean, thirteen dot one is fine.
So remove this.
No, just accept this.
Okay.
To write the rest of them. Okay. There's that thing about, okay, I know.
So I think, wait, hang on, can you go back to fourteen one? So, as we all look at fourteen point one, it's on page nine, right? No, page eight, sorry, page eight. Chris, are you? So fourteen point one, right now, re- is, uh, required approval, this amendment, this agreement may be amended by three fifths of the association members.
Well, he's, he wants to change it to ununanimous.
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Approval, so that means everyone has to vote to change it, and the issue is gonna be another hill they're gonna die on.
They may, but I think it's something that we, we add, you know, and.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you say that they are or aren't?
No, they are.
They die.
What do you think that is?
Cause they're set in their ways.
I, I don't think you can even wrap your arms around it until you go to one of these meetings. I mean.
They're, they're passionate.
They're, they're passionate, and I mean, there's no.
There's nothing wrong with being passionate, as long as you're, you're fair. I mean, that's, that's why we have, you know.
And in their eyes, they are.
In their eyes, they are.
That, that's, that's the thing.
Tell them they're wrong, and they're not gonna see it any other way, right, Michael?
This is pertaining to the agreement, correct, not everything else.
Well, this agreement is everything, though.
But the, but the amendment of the agreement, that's, that's the only thing that he's saying unanimous on.
Correct.
Not, not everything else.
Correct.
Not everything.
And this would be going forward, the amendment being unanimous. And this is where.
You know, to be honest, you think they'll even notice, I, I don't know.
Well, that's not even the point, that's not the mentality we want.
Right.
It's, put it in there, and, in, in my personal opinion is, we put it in there, and if it has to be discussed again with them, then we do that, if not, then they're gonna come back with what they wanna change or exempt.
I don't think it, I don't think you can make it unanimous, I three fifths, I.
See, the, the thing that I struggle with, and maybe this is where we need Bob, is how how can you make someone pay a bill if they haven't agreed to the charges? Okay, let, let, let's say, a perfect example, someone steals your credit card, at some point, you get the money back. Depending if you're crediting your bank, it either has to be within twenty four hours or forty eight days, but at some point, you get your money back if they can prove you didn't make the purchase, no difference in this instance. So I, I truly think in a court of law, if you took it to that.
Well, but we still need the wording proper.
Correct.
So if we don't change it to this wording here, we have a battle then.
Well, I'm just, I guess, I'm just, I guess I was talking a lot more than less, but I'm just, I'm looking at it in that sense, and I agree with you, or, I, I do, I, I agree that it's a, it's a wording issue, and I think that we do need to change this wording, um. it's a, it's a wording issue and I think that we do need to change this wording, um. And I, I do think that I could. There might be a.
Here, here's what I would like to say.
Yep.
Michael.
Yep.
I don't want to have to feel like to make decisions based on feeling intimidated. I think, remember, these decisions that we're making, we're making these decisions based on what's in the best interest of who we represent. And, and it seems simple to me. You're right, I, I hadn't, I haven't attended a meeting and I will, cause I, I like to see what it is you guys are describing. But it's that right now, I think our representation requires us as a body to put in the wording that protects us, the city of Goodview. That's my opinion.
I agree. I think we have to do an unanimous, I think it's gonna be. Um, I think we, we.
I think it has to say unanimous approval. Or unanimous.
No, 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 we're good, we're good. It was just, he was trying to go to sleep and I had to wake it up.
Don't let it go to sleep.
I think we, yeah. Acceptation.
Go twenty, take that. Okay, hold on, section seventeen, let me, let me look at. Put member of the member with section seventeen, that's a typo. The address of the member.
And the clerk for the member?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yep, okay, and then on the last one to go, is there a, you know, something I'm using for this painting? See, I don't know what the intent of this sentence was. On the day and the year. Oh, I would say on the day and the year shown on page. Cause it was never, or can't we just put uniqueness thereof?
Sure.
Yeah, but I know, it's just the day and the year first, but I think this should be, cause it's right here. The day and the year. I don't even know.
Would you say above?
Just do Janu-, just do January first. Do January first, twenty twenty-six. We're just heading there.
Let me just go from the top all the way down again.
Do these comments resolve?
I don't know, I don't know how to do that, to be honest.
Okay, I can do it when you're done.
Okay.
Cause I knew you showed them, unless you wanna show the list without the comments, I wouldn't imagine.
Correct.
Or you want to keep, to keep some of them in there? Well, they're not gonna resolve if we don't change them all, so, no, I think you can leave them there.
Don't say more, Brad and Brian.
I can just save it as another name.
I don't know, let you do that, honestly. I don't trust myself. It's your computer, that's what I figure. No, and I guess when I said, you know, I hope I didn't come off sounding rude when I said that you haven't attended a meeting, that's.
Oh, no, no, I know, I know what you guys mean, it's just, you know, it's.
Um, how come there's no internets here? Doesn't this, don't these hook up automatically or no?
To the printer?
No, to the internets.
Is there wifi here?
There's no wifi here?
No, there is, but I don't know why yours isn't connecting.
Can you turn the wifi off, did you?
Huh? Um, I don't know why I'm not on the internet.
Go back down the little globe. Do you need a password? Now click that.
Say, Goodview guest?
Try the Goodview.
What's the password?
I don't know. Laura, what's the password? Oh, she's doing it? Why not?
So is, is that for city of Goodview?
Oh, staff.
Staff. It's a desk and a staff.
Good use of staff.
Not.
It says no internet secured. Oh, there it's connected.
Okay.
Oh, she did connect on the last one.
No, that's something I, on number seventeen, we wanna make sure they both change it.
Oh.
I know she got it. So who wants this file?
Me. Hang on, I don't save it yet.
What?
Right here, number seventeen correction.
No, no, I have it.
No, I'm saying number seventeen in the fourth thing here, I don't need corrections.
What's the correction?
No, I got it.
Notice each member shall be given and writing the U.S. mailer fax to the address of the and the clerk for.
The a, and of the member and the clerk for that member. Wait a minute, do you want all the comments out of there?
Yeah.
So you want these all gone?
Wait, can't you just like, no, I'm gonna shut up. You're doing what you're doing, looks great.
You want all the comments out, right?
Yeah, yeah. How are you do that? Some minutes before I can figure that out.
All of them, you want all of them?
All of them. No comments.
All right, well, this might take a minute, you might wanna have John convening while we do this.
Well, no, cause we have to make a motion, we have to review this and then make a. At least that's what I hope is, sorry, I don't wanna speak for the whole group. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, what was your name? Brenda, okay. Good G township, yep.
I've only been to a couple of association meetings and it's pretty interesting.
Oh.
Can I just say too, just like the passion part of it, um. I think like, I was surprised because it was thirty years old, that agreement, it just seems really old. And when we got our sixty thousand dollar debt, I mean, we had to tell our people too. This is what happens, they want a new truck and this is on the big class. So I think a little bit, but it's just the townships are like, hey, this evening, we're gonna spread out. Because we can't just keep giving sixty thousand dollar bills every other year to pay for new trucks, you know, too, so. Just a little bit coming from the township. And maybe just the delay on getting, cause I think they did this in February, correct? It just feels like.
We've been, we've been working on it since February, yes, yeah.
And just trying to communicate with your journey is tough too, isn't it? Just, uh.
It's generally not, it's generally not like he's driving across, bringing his dollar back to you.
Yeah, cause there are a lot of meetings on that, it's true. It's not really, does he actually come to? Cause it seems like it would be so select to get everybody on the same page at the same time and.
And it's too slow to when he zooms in and what.
Yeah.
But it's just the nature of it, it's all out and back and forth for sure, but I think they're anxious just because it's been, and like you said, Michael, that they got the know for how many years in a row. Nope, not gonna do anything and that kind of gets, it wears on you then as a township, but then you get a sixty thousand dollar bill and that was ours. Where acreage is a whole inch more than the nation itself.
Like, you just know it's coming, right?
Well, they basically voted that we were, that they wanted a new truck because it's your city. For your department, which they have to be in the city, but they're saying maybe this, maybe this, maybe this. And like, to, to be able to operate is what the impression that I feel like we have with the township. So then if it's gonna be used for everybody, city included, it should be, which it sounds like your term is still, it should be more evenly spread out. And I, I feel like they've come to you in good, good faith, you know, to say, let's work on it, but if not, they feel like it's been during hours.
Yeah. And it, I mean, and I, I won't say it's any one entity's problem that's been dragged out, you know, we've been, we've had several meetings just to get the renditions figured out and then get them edited, sent out, read them. Yeah, convene again to, you know, make edits.
Instead of just like two big teams of everybody coming together.
I cannot picture trying to change those.
Technology's supposed to be better, right?
So when you guys get this, make sure that you put it, before you print out, make sure you put your view into no markup. There we go.
Hey, I got an email. It's from you.
Sure I did.
This must be an ancient version of my software, I can't believe it. Oh, so it's under review.
How many copies you want?
I would like five.
And then all of us, yeah.
That'd be great, thank you, sorry, yeah. I guess.
I'll take my stapler.
Oh, let's take it stapled.
I do just the heaters sometimes, I don't.
Man, I need to get one of those.
Those with the hefty tag.
We're actually live, live, are we?
Like, yeah.
You can zoom, uh, YouTube it right now?
Yeah.
Ah. Do we have to do like special meetings YouTube? Oh, I didn't, I thought, okay.
I thought so too.
Work sessions are, this is a meeting, this is a regular, a regular council meeting.
Yes, this is a special meeting.
But it's a regular council, it's not a special work session, it's a regular council meeting, special council meeting, so it all starts in the same place as council meetings. If it was a work session, then it would just be recorded out from, off of what she does.
Is that?
That's why we gotta give the public notice.
Well, you had to give a public notice the other way. Even for a working meeting, but is that? Um.
What was I gonna say? I can't remember.
I thought you didn't technically have to video record any meetings.
Even though it's fast, it's not that fast to do ten copies before two weeks after.
So then I just will try to talk to them about the show timing.
I guess I know what I'm doing tomorrow after work. I guess I know what I'm doing tomorrow after work.
So you can't, you can't email the, this to those guys? Well, I suppose then most of them won't, yeah.
I could, I could, this is great.
Lucky they come in with a phone. That is at like nineteen seventy-five.
I'm trying to think, George, Roger, and, um, I don't remember what his name.
One of those guys.
Steve.
I call one, I email one, and I text another one, so I have.
Yeah, oh, that's right.
They all have flip phones.
Yeah, they all have flip phones, well, yeah, a couple.
So at least you guys can get it.
Yeah. We do have flip phones.
It's high tech, man, why would you need anything else?
Does this have the date on it then?
Yes.
The back?
Oh.
Oh, like the revision date?
Are you?
No, it's in the file.
You don't know, the very top says it goes into effect January first of twenty twenty-six?
No, the date that this was amended.
Just pan right to this date up there.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the amended, and we state a joint power agreement of the Goodview Community Fire Truck Association amended on eight, six, twenty, twenty-five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion passed.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good one. Thank you.